Okay. Hello, this is Amy O'Brien. Welcome to the Schenango Forks Board of Education Regular Meeting, Thursday, May 7th, 2020. Will the clerk please conduct roll call?
Amy O'Brien. Spiros Tomatoes.
Here.
Mary Collins.
Mary is muted.
Sorry, here. Mike Fabra.
Here.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Here.
We have a quorum. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I, Erin McMullin, have confirmed with council that this meeting is being held in compliance with Executive Order 202.1, issued by Governor Andrew M. Cuomo on March 12th, 2020. The executive order suspends Article 7 of the Public Officers Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take any action authorized by law without permitting in-public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service. This meeting is being held remotely via Zoom virtual meeting software. The public has the ability to view or listen to this meeting live via the Zoom app, web browser, and/or by telephone. This meeting is being recorded and will be transcribed at a later date. We also do have rules for public comment. The public wishing to speak to the Board of Education will be allowed this period of time to do so under the following guidelines. Speakers will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and the entire public comment session to a maximum of 30 minutes, which may be waived by a majority vote of the board. Speakers are requested to state their name and topic. Please do so each time we pick you to speak for the recording. Speakers will not be allowed to personally attack any board member, administrator, or any of the public present. Also, no comments by the speakers will be permitted that deal with executive session subjects, such as individual personnel matters, discipline issues pertaining to specific individuals, including students. And speakers will not be allowed to read letters. In this case, you'll see a button at the bottom of your screen that says, "Raise hand." I will watch for the raised hand. I will unmute you while you talk, and then I will mute you again after your comment. Thank you.
2.1 Superintendent's Report.
Hey, this is O'Brien. It looks like a lot, but really not that much. There's a lot of FYI's for the board and the community. We have put together a graduation committee that's going in the morning to plan graduation. As we know, schools close for us the year. Particularly sympathetic to our seniors and having three students that have gone through high school and in their senior year to lose what they lost is totally unconscionable. And we need to get to the top of the school district and make sure that we can do everything we can do for these seniors. And that's going to start tomorrow with that graduation committee. And that graduation committee is also going to be used to figure out other ways that we can recognize our seniors. So, any seniors, your senior parents at the board meeting, can I, again, my apologies. This is absolutely horrendous for all of our students, K through 12, pre-K through 12, but really hits the seniors. And I apologize for that, but I want you to know, the district, we're definitely working on that. The committee has two board members, the high school principal, staff, the president of the class, and we're going to add more students and hopefully some parents. So, it happens tomorrow at 9:00 AM, it's going to be the first meeting.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you want to do public comment before the reports, or would you like to do the reports and then public comment after?
Before. I didn't think we had anyone.
We actually had a hand raised, so.
I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It happened after you started talking, so I will go to that person. If, right now, we have John Edwards. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Edwards. I'm trying to unmute you.
Yeah, he looks still muted.
Still muted.
Okay, go ahead.
My question was just that there was going to be a public comment period since we skipped over that in the agenda. It just seemed like it went pretty quick to the superintendent's report. I just wanted to make sure people had an opportunity to speak if they wanted to. And I.
Absolutely.
One other, there's just one other thing I would say is, I understand why the meeting's been set up this way, where the public can't see each other. Personally, that makes me feel a little bit like it's not open. I'm sure it complies with the law, but it is nice to know who's at the meetings and be able to see that. So, I don't know if there's a way for that to be reflected in the minute. I don't want to make extra work for anybody, but that is part of, you know, attending the meeting is being able to see who's there. Just, you know, my two cents, I get the security feature and I understand why it's set up this way. But I also wanted to make sure people had a chance to speak during the public comment. That was it, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, do we have any additional public comment? I was also under the impression there wasn't any.
I do not. Let me see. No, I do not see any more hands up.
Jonathan, I believe, and thank you, Jonathan Edwards. I believe, Erin, will you not have a list of everyone who was at the meeting?
To be honest, I don't know. I'm not sure how to record the screen itself.
Can we merge the two?
We'll have to. Okay, so Jamie said I'll be able to see when we do the recording who has signed in.
Right, that makes sense. We got recording the screen, just go back.
Yeah. Yep, so I'll be able to do that.
And Jonathan, we did have an incident where some of our Zooms did get hacked, so that's why we went to this for the board meeting. So, that is why the extra step of security, just again, so we don't run into any unfortunate instance where we get hacked.
Can we just repeat how they would raise their hand in case somebody wasn't on and didn't hear?
There's a button down at the bottom of their screen. It just says, "Raise hand." I think it's blue, and it will raise a little blue hand near their name, and I'll be able to unmute them for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional public comment?
No hands.
Okay. Second thing on my report is June 9th. Finally, we have a date for the budget. It's going to actually be June 9th. The O E member vote will be that same day. It's going to be all by, I'm going to call it absentee ballot. It's really not absentee ballot, it's COVID-19 ballot at this point. Everybody should be mailed homemade ballot, and you'll have to put your name on the outside of the envelope. You'll fill in, you'll send it into the school. It's been very tedious, and Cheryl Sack was on the board meeting. She's a panelist. She will tell people that we've been working very diligently to make sure we get this right and make sure that everyone gets their ballot to vote. Cheryl, is there anything, has our school attorney, you'd like to add about that process?
I would like to tell everybody who's here, make sure your ballot is into the district physically before 5:00 PM on the 9th, please. Not postmarked, it's physically in the district. So, return it as soon as possible, or make sure it's physically here.
And again, that's something we're continuing to work on.
Are we going to have some kind of Dropbox or somewhere for them to drop it off if it's that day and they forgot to mail it in?
I believe that is an option. I have to talk to Erin and talk about whether we're physically going to do that. Also, the district clerk is in, and Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, the elementary building, not in your normal building?
Yep, in the elementary building, the downstairs entrance where people pick up food or go through for parent pickup. There's a window there. I actually planned on being at that office from 9:00 until 5:00 on the day of the vote.
So, please make sure if you can't mail it in time, or you want to do that, please physically bring it in. You cannot count it just by the postmark. And the information about where she physically is, is in the information that gets sent home as well. So, there should be no confusion that she's at the elementary school.
And if somebody doesn't receive a ballot and they believe they were supposed to, what is the course of action?
They can contact Mrs. McMullin, and she will get them a ballot.
Okay.
Exactly.
Cheryl, thanks for helping out. This is a very tedious time for all of us with the new regulations. I appreciate your help.
You're welcome. We're glad to help. And just so everyone knows, when Dr. Peck says it's tedious, it is not only tedious, confusing, contrary within the executive order, there's typos, there's issues, but it doesn't address everything in the law. School elections are complicated when you don't have these last-minute changes. And when you have these last-minute changes, it complicates things so badly, and we're not getting a lot of clarity. So, we are trying to be conservative so that people can vote and their vote counts. So, I can't stress what Dr. Peck just said enough. If you don't have a ballot, or you don't think you have enough ballots for the number of voters, qualified voters in your house, you get one and you think you should have two, et cetera, please call the clerk.
Thank you, Cheryl. I just have COVID-19, and again, it's ongoing. We continue to work very well as a district, the admin, the board, the teachers, the community. It's come out now, we're closed for us this school year. We're not really sure what summer school is going to look like. We're not sure what the summer looks like. We're not sure what the fall, going back to school. I want the community to know and the board to know that the admin team is working on this with the teachers, with the staff, all staff, instructional, non-instructional, they've all been outstanding. And we'll keep you updated as we know more. We're getting the information piecemeal, as you know. We will continue to do that. Capital Project update. I talked to the Capital Project people who are doing the Capital Project in the elementary school and the turf. And that going right away, as soon as we have the okay to get into elementary school. Mrs. Kazikvinsky is working with her teachers to get the kindergarten, first grade hallway cleaned out. We can start working on the floor, we can start working on the middle school roof, and we can get out there on the turf. So, if anything good is going to come out of this, we can have all that done sooner than we thought we're going to have it done. And that means elementary teacher can get back in the wings sooner than we thought, and people get back on the all-purpose field sooner than they thought. So, the Capital Project is being sped up a little bit just because we have the ability to start to work without the students and the teachers in the building. So, donations, we've received very generous donations from Frito-Lay and from Rap Signs and the Dairy Farmers of America. And I actually started a little thank you on the webpage, we're listing those donations and more out there on the webpage if you go out. Very impressive Tuesday, week ago Tuesday, the team and helps for some aides and some staff members handed out almost 6,000, a little over 5,000 gallons of Mountain Tarian Community. It was a very moving night, and it was very special, I think, for the people involved, but that was awesome. And we started that little donation thank you on the webpage. So, this next one, appreciation of staff, and I just want to take a public chance, and I've sent emails and I've talked to people individually, and I know we signed up on River Road, but from instructional to admin to teachers, everyone in between, you've gone above and beyond anything that anyone could ever expect out of you. And my hats off to you for that. You've been absolutely outstanding. Uncertain time with what's going on, the problems we're facing with COVID, but our teaching methods have had to be altered. And as I publicly say on the record at the board meeting in front of the board, that no matter what your position has been, everyone has stepped up in every unit, and that's absolutely. We appreciate that, and I know the board appreciates it, and I know our students appreciate it. So, thank you, everyone on the call, and please pass that along. Next thing, I'm going to skip and then get back to 2021 budget. We actually have dates as well. We're going to approve the budget on May 12th in the budget hearing if the board wants to have it. The new rules, they don't have to have a budget hearing, would be May 28th. So, here's an opportunity for the board to speak and discuss, do you want to have a 28th budget hearing?
What's, we're approving it on the 12th, and then the hearing is for the public?
Well, no, the public can be there on the 12th as well. It's an open concession approval.
Okay.
Because of everything that's going on this year, that the state is actually waiving that you don't have to have the public, excuse me, the budget hearing this year, you can just go with approval.
Can you explain what the hearing is? So.
Yeah. Mark, will you explain the difference between the two, please?
The budget hearing is just, it breaks down the budget into three parts, the capital component, the administrative component, and program component. And it's the budget that's basically that the public sees. And I mean, it's really no different than the other one, but I'm not, Cheryl, are you hearing that the state has waived that requirement?
I'm honestly having everyone do their public hearings. It's just, it's more consistent, it's easier, and it would be my recommendation that they do it. Keeps the public involved. I mean, I'm taking, Koffler and Gerhardt is taking a very conservative approach in all of this because this is such uncertain times. I would tell the board to do the public hearing.
All right, sounds like we'll do a public hearing then. I think going against the attorney's advice is probably not wise.
Agreed.
And the last thing, and I know Mrs. Kazikvinsky is on the call, is just an FYI for the board. I know Catherine and Hannah, and along with her team in elementary, put a lot of work into it, and thank you very much, is the CFE Elementary grading for the third trimester. And if there's any questions, we can open that up and we can unmute. So, if there's no questions, it's just a straight FYI to the board.
Let's just give it a few seconds to find out if anyone has any questions.
We do have one question. Okay, if you would just say your name, please. Oh, I'm going to unmute you. Or actually.
Jeremy Furman, just wondering when the public meeting is going to be. Is it going to be the 12th or the 28th?
It'll be the 28th, sir.
Is the public meeting going to be the 12th or the 28th?
It's the 28th, sir.
All right, thank you.
What is happening on the 12th?
The 12th is the board is going to approve the budget.
Which the public can still attend.
Absolutely, yeah, it's an open board meeting.
I just want to make sure he understands that.
Yep, absolutely, it's an open board meeting.
Anyone else?
All right, if there's no question, Hannah, Catherine, thank you to all elementary people to put that together. I know, again, in these times, everything's unprecedented, and you did a very good job doing that. I thank you, and it's official now. And that's my report. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. 2.2, I don't have anything for my report. Let's see, okay, let's jump down to three, the additions on three are FYI. And personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the following tenure appointments, 4.1 through 4.10. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Can we do those separate? Tenure is a big deal. I just think that everyone should be acknowledged and.
They are going to be. I'm going to acknowledge them after.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Yep.
And I apologize, who was the second?
Me.
Oh, thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. I'd like to congratulate the following. Courtney Robinson, Meredith Schmidt, Lori Nolan, Sue Malaise, Joe Wasika, Nicole Hanch, Carly Poichkar, Corey Halfrick, Lindsay Doolittle, and Colin Edwards. Congratulations.
If any of those teachers are on the call, can you raise your hand and just come to the screen? And I'd like to personally congratulate you as well. I know somewhere on, I see Sue Malaise is on. Anyone else? Courtney's on. Courtney, that's not you.
Hi, Dr. Peck, this is Sue Malaise.
Jill, congratulations, you've done an absolutely outstanding job at the Forks. Congratulations on your tenure.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Courtney, congratulations, you two, you've done an outstanding job. Proud to have you on board, proud to give you tenure. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Lori, you had a very first tough year, no fault of your own. Congratulations. You're a kindergarten teacher, very proud.
Thank you very much.
Corey, I've gotten email after email how great you've done this, especially with the COVID closing. Very proud to grant your tenure. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Carly, always a strong teacher, very much deserved. Congratulations on your tenure.
Thank you very much.
Colin, it seems like I heard you yesterday. Congratulations, and you're doing an outstanding job down the science department. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And anyone who's not on the call, I don't see Nicole, I don't see Lindsay, I don't see Meredith, and congratulations out to them too, Joe Seeker as well, all well-deserved, well-earned.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
4.12, Letter of Intent to Retire. Victoria Mosiac, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to accept the letter of intent to retire from Victoria Mosiac, effective June 30th, 2020, as attached. May I have a motion? Okay. Second. Discussion.
I don't think Vicki's on, but that's a tremendous loss to the high school. She will be missed beyond belief. An absolutely fantastic nurse dedicated to the district. I wish on her retirement.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? And roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. 4.13, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Mr. Richard Schwartz, as attached. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Abstained.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Abstained.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. 5.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education and Special Education, and be it resolved that the Board of Education confirms the recommended placements. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
May I have a second? Thank you. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. 5.2, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the addendum between the Schenango Forks Central School District and the Schenango Forks Teachers Association regarding health insurance Medicare Advantage Plan, as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Joe, would you mind recapping, just so people know where we've ended up? And. Thank you.
After the nine town hall meetings and the presentation from Excels Blue Cross Shield, the MOA was written up between the District and the CFTA. The CFTA voted on it, and I believe it was 100 to 10. If I'm wrong, I think I'm right, in the ballpark in favor of the resolution you're voting on of the MOA contract, which would simply say that the taking Humana for the retirees, but if they want to stay where they are, they're just going to need to fill paperwork out before the July 1st deadline to stay where they are. For all retirees, only ones that want to go.
So, it would be a seamless transition. There won't be getting bumped out and then pulled back in.
That is correct. That's correct. So, if you say they want to stay, they can stay. There won't be any Blue Cross Blue Shield to Humana, back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. You either stay Blue Cross Blue Shield, or you go to Humana.
And it's nothing more than filling out an opt-out disclosure form. Again, that sounded. Right. Okay, any further discussion?
When will they be getting that form?
We are currently working right now to get all that finalized. We're really waiting on tonight's vote before we did too much work. I've already done two calls with Humana, and I know Mark was on the last call with us, but we hope to get it soon, very soon, so it's not, no one's rushing on a deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any more? May I have a motion?
I believe we have the motion and the second, so we can go right with the roll call.
Okay, who motioned and who second? I'm not hearing anybody. Okay.
We had Mike Fabra motion, and we had Mary Collins second.
Okay, thank you. We did, thank you. I apologize, I went backwards. Roll call, please.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. On recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 5.3 through 5.8, as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second. Second.
Discussion. Thank you. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. 6.1 is a district credit card, that is an FYI. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 6.2 through 6.4, as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second? Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. 6.5, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the resolution providing for the holding of a special school district meeting in and for the Schenango Forks Central School District, Brew and Schenango Counties, New York, and providing for the other matters in connection therewith, as attached. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Discussion. And roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes. Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Motion passed. Okay, 7.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to adopt the comprehensive student attendance policy based on the recommendations of the Schenango Forks Policy Committee and Council, as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I didn't get a chance to review these. I must have missed them when I was going through the agenda.
Okay.
I'll just abstain from voting for that reason.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
And Lynn Lockwood abstained.
Motion passed. Motion passed. 8.1, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to adopt the complaints about school personnel policy number 1440 based on the recommendation of the Schenango Forks Policy Committee and Council as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I read, excuse me, what Cheryl said, and did we make that decision? I looked at it, but I didn't catch. Did we make the decision about it was for students only? Students and employees? Or I know that was a question. Is it for the public only or it had to do with students and employees? As far as complaint.
Cheryl, I'm going to let you answer this. This is the pulse that will not die. So you can take it on for a minute.
Yep. So my understanding is that the thought process was, is that this is not internal complaints. This is external complaints from the public. And that was the intention. I didn't stay to the whole policy meeting, but that is my understanding. I know there's others not as panelists who were there. But that is my, my understanding is that that decision was made. I don't know if anybody calls that differently, but.
So prior, this was just complaints regarding school personnel, but now it's limited to public complaints. So what do we have in place for?
I think it always, I think it always was, I think it always was complaints. We have other, we have hostile work environment. We have other policies that affect internal employee, officer, staff issues. It was just an observation that I made that it wasn't on its face clear that this was just for the public. So this was just a clarification. It's not really a change.
Okay.
So we have other policies in place that really do this for the, for the staff, for problems internally.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Michael Fabra.
Aye.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Motion passed.
I'm sorry, just didn't hear Lynn abstain. Okay, thank you.
Motion passed. 9.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from April 2nd, 2020 and April 21st, 2020, Board of Education meetings as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
All right, we take Mike and then, are you okay with a second, Mary?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And roll call, please.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
10.1, a motion for consideration of executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Discussions involving proposed pending or current litigation and contract negotiations. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
We also do have a hand. Never mind, they put it down. Okay. Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
She's muted.
Sorry, my husband was making noise. Aye.
I forgot where it was. Okay, Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
So that is the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Aaron, are you staying here in case there is action after the executive?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll come back into this. So the public should know.
We're not adjourned yet.
Yep.
Okay, so do we leave and then go to the other link?
That's correct. There's an executive.
Go to the link that I sent out. I gotta start the meeting.
Okay, you just sent it out again or is it some?
No, no, I sent it out. It's.
Aaron, are you still awake?
Barely.
I'm not sure Aaron's there anymore.
I've been yawning all night, ask these guys.
There have been 15, there have been 15 people hanging in this whole time too.
Aaron, you gotta take Mary, you gotta take Mary Collins out of the participants again.
Okay.
You know what it is? No one has anything else to do. This is. They watched all the TV. There's nothing left. You're muted, Mary.
So we just need Amy?
I'm not sure if we need Amy to close down the meeting.
No, okay.
He has motion.
We got the motion, don't we? Yeah, we got the motion.
Yeah, we need her. She's all asleep.
I'm sorry. Okay, is Joe?
He's here.
Do we have Aaron?
Yep.
Okay, poor Aaron. A motion to authorize the superintendent Oh geez. I can't remember any. To execute the MOA on the early retirement incentive. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
A discussion? Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
And Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Motion passed. A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
You got them all. You got them all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lynn, I can't hear you, Mary.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Scene is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around.
No problem.
Thanks, Aaron.